Sorry.
I'm butching it slightly and I'm clear on yours.
[laughing] I forgot that.
They don't do.
I need to look back. Oh, thank you very much.
All right, would everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the republic, into the public, which stands one nation, united, in this small, democratic, just as we're all.
I have the roll call, please.
Council President Albertson.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the administrative report. Oh, take your time, Kristy, please. You're in double duty.
All right, good evening. Join us at the Be My Valentine Disco Dance hosted at the Don Person Renton Senior Activity Center, Thursday, February 13th, from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. Enjoy light refreshments while our DJs spins your favorite Valentine classics. I can't believe that winded me.
It's odd.
Five dollars per person. Space is limited and we encourage you to register in advance. Pre-registration may be done by visiting the Community Events tab at RentonWad.gov or by calling 425-430-6633. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic impacts, and road closures happening this week can be found on our website. That is all, sir.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have audience comments. We have four people signed up to speak. I do want to remind everybody that all remarks must be addressed to the council as a whole, and if you require a response, please provide us with your name, address, and email address. Um, when you come up, each speaker will please name, uh, state your name and your city of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak. The timer is next to the city clerk. Once it starts flashing yellow, please begin to wrap up your comments. And first up, we have John Huston.
Yes, sir. Uh, good evening, uh, and, uh, thank you, guys, for allowing me to speak. Um, Happy Black History Month. Um, and also, uh, I'd like to say that there's, uh, for me, a black man in Renton, there's good history here and there's some bad history, and I'm here to represent my, my family and, uh, the land that we lost, um, to a phony eminent domain scam. Um, that's all I'm gonna say about that. If, um, there's people here that don't know the story, there's, there's a lot of information on the, on, on the internet, online, about, uh, what happened to my family. Um, I also like to, uh, say that we've got a, there's a state bill working through the, through the Senate right now, uh, that will stop school districts like Renton School District from taking land and not using it for what they say they're gonna use it for, then turn around and sell it for a profit, which they did to my family. Um, uh, one quick, I, I might have shared this before. I have a grandson that's worked hard through high school, messed around his freshman year, but he's made honor roll the last three years. He's been accepted to five universities, and we don't know how he's gonna pay for it. My parents had that set up. They weren't educated, but they're there to make sure that we were educated. So my, my, my grandson, who's worked so hard, proud to call his grandpa and tell him that he's accepted at San Jose State, Fresno State, and San Francisco State, and Monterey State, and Stanislaw State. Proud. But how's he gonna get there? How's he gonna live? It's a big question. So, um, the last time I was here, um, you all voted to do some research and investigate, um, uh, my family situation, and, and hopefully that, uh, when you start that, or if you can let me know if, when you think you're gonna be able to start that, and hopefully I can be informed on it. I, I have some information that I, I would like to share with you also after you've done your own. Um, so hopefully we can, can, uh, get to the bottom of this. Uh, you know, my family still suffers. Um, I live in an apartment over on Burnett. When there's 200 homes on that land, all valued over a million dollars. I live in a one-bedroom apartment, um, defeating everything that my parents worked for. So, thank you, guys, for letting me talk. Uh, hopefully, uh, uh, someone will, will get back to me and let me know when, uh, that research is gonna start, or if that's still going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huston. Uh, we'll make sure staff, someone from staff reaches out when that is completed. Next up, Cheryl Fries.
Cheryl Fries, uh, Renton resident as of three years ago this month. Um, and, John, I just wanna say I'm sorry and thank you for that information. So, I'm gonna switch a little bit based on hearing that is, um, a couple of weeks ago, I had asked you all to consider, please, stepping across from behind your desks and seats and engage us and join us in communication. And when I hear somebody like John, who's been through what he's been through, and he's asking and hoping that somebody's gonna follow up with him, I truly hope that you all do. So, what I'm gonna say is, as I was Googling in my Google Docs, trying to figure out a little bit about what I wanted to say regarding Logan Six today, I came across a document that was actually dated February of 2024, and I just feel like I'm turning into a broken record, which is everything that we have asked for and been talking about. And when I say "we" initially, when Matt and I were the president and vice president of the North Renton Neighborhood, and even as residents, and then now as just a resident, not even a board member, um, and/or officer of North Renton Neighborhood Association, we just feel like we're speaking to a wall of blank faces with no engagement. And it doesn't matter if we're talking about Park, it doesn't matter if we're talking about Logan. And so, a year ago, um, what I had requested was that we really talk about the community plan that was initially written in 2011 and updated in 2017. And it specifically talked about enhancing measures, it talked about protecting and enhancing the neighborhoods of, uh, the city of Renton. It also talked about the initial guidelines for the ratio of parking to units, and the original parking ratio was created when there was supposed to have been sound transit and other things. We also talked about the city of Renton Resolution 2708, which specifically states in quotes that there is a preservation of the North Renton Neighborhood and Kennydale as single-family neighborhoods, with the city making protection of these neighborhoods a priority. And I don't know what flag I have to wave, I don't know who I have to talk to to get you all to understand that this is not being abided by. And the other thing that I wanna say is, we have tried to do our absolute best, and I'm saying "we" collectively as a group from North Renton, we engaged the developer, we engaged city planning, we invited them out, we wrote letters, we maintained professionalism and, and communication, and we just can't get that from you all. So it feels like we are standing out here on an island without support, without acknowledgement, without communication. Tomorrow is the public hearing, and we are just gonna keep asking over and over and showing up and showing up and engaging the news and media and doing whatever we have to do to get you all to actually start taking action and listening to us, incredibly disappointed and disillusioned. Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Marilyn Milliken, and I missed, but we actually have five people signed up.
Well, my name is Marilyn Milliken, and I'm a resident of the North Renton area. I live on Park Avenue. I've been there for 25 years this coming summer. Um, and I'm here to talk about Logan Six. Uh, with John, I've been wanting to meet him for a long time. I lived very close to where he and his family lived, and something very similar happened to our family, um, at the same, right around the same time, from the Renton School District. Is this a pattern? That, that they, they come, they say we're going to take their property for eminent domain, and then, yeah, they have whatever school thing they're going to do, and then they do something different? Because that's what happened to us as well. And now we're seeing them using this for eminent domain, anyway, for the high, the Renton High School. I didn't wanna get into that, but, um, I'm here tonight to talk about the Logan Six property. And this goes on and on. What a waste of time. So, when you see the cars that are going in and out now, and then you see the new cars that will be added with this new building, it, it's a problem. It's not the way it was when they first put the plans out there. They've changed it, uh, and that's okay. I mean, sometimes you have to change things, but then you have to look at the other things that it impacts at the same time. Um, anyway, the city seems to be ignoring the things that, and the people that come. We know that more development is going to come. We, we understand that. I think everybody understands that. But let's make it as painless as possible. Let's not just ignore what people are saying that live there day after day. So, if you wait until it's built, installed, and put it off, and wait until it's built, then it's too late to correct the problems, whatever they are. And probably, almost certainly, this traffic is going to be a problem, and it'll be too late to make it right then. So, wouldn't it be better to just listen and then check it out? Make one final, really good test to see what's going on with that situation? I've never been up here to speak before, so if I'm appearing to be very nervous and not knowing what I'm doing, I am. Sorry. So, um, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And you did fine. All right. Next up, we have Gabriel Jones.
Hey, folks, my name is Gabriel Jones, and here today to speak on something that might get me a little emotional, so I apologize for that in advance, but I'm gonna ask the city of Renton to create a law that bans discrimination based on sexuality and gender identity for any city events and anything we receive federal funding for. While we technically already kind of have that with Title IX, Title IX can always be reinterpreted, especially as, like, a lot of things being re-looked at, reinterpreted, we could lose that, and that's something we don't have a lot of projections for, genuity and gender and sexuality here in Renton yet. And the reason I wanna talk about this is, I kinda wanna talk about what it's like being a trans person since this new administration has started. Uh, there, there have been a lot of new executive orders that go on trans people directly. We've got trans healthcare bans for anyone under the age of 19, so even if you are a legal adult, you still cannot have the right to make that decision. Uh, you're looking at state employee, uh, state and federal employees having signatures, uh, having pronouns in their bio, pronouns in their email signatures banned. Idaho is asking the Supreme Court to look at the ruling that allows gay marriage. Uh, the CDC is removing any mention of trans people, gender identity, LGBTQ people, and more in any other briefing. So if I wanna look at things like, that would revolve around, uh, how transition drugs would work, the CDC would not be able to give that to me because they have scrubbed it from their website. If I wanted to look at the rate of HIV, which is a very big problem that affects the community, it is not there anymore. Uh, the removal of trans people from federal websites got to the point where there are trans people being removed from the Missing and Endangered Children's website because they are trans people. It is getting a terrifying time, and I have an, I have an X on your mark on my license. If I were to believe I could not safely live in the US, US anymore, there is no current promise I'd be able to even get a passport, as people with X in their passports have been told, you're gonna wait a long time to try and apply a passport right now. If you have an X on your current passport and you need to renew it because it's expiring, uh, they are being seized and they might not get them back. If you want, so if we genuinely believed we were unable to be safe, we could not be able to leave, and that is a serious terrifying issue. And I am not the first trans person I know who has said that we have stuff around our door ready to pack and ready, and ready for a plan out if we have to take that, and that is absolutely terrifying. I love the US and care so deeply for this country, which is why you see me up here all the time, which is why you'll see me at every community event possible, because I care about this country, I care about this city, and I care about the people in it, and I wanna fight every day for it. And I know so many other people do, which is why I'm urging Renton to take the step to show that we also stand on trans people, wanna get scary, because it is getting scary of trans people, and I'm asking Renton to take those steps too, because we are a community who cares for each other, and if we leave trans people out in the cold, it, we are, they will die realistically. Thank you for your time. That's it.
Uh, next up, Matt Hanby.
Hi, good evening, council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, I've been here before with written statements and handouts and whatnot, but tonight I thought I might just speak from the heart a little bit. Um, as you can see, you know, the North Renton Neighborhood is not going away. Uh, as you can probably tell, we've, we've got a good group here tonight. And I think the frustration for me is that a lot of the issues we brought up are about a specific thing, right? And I get it that, and I've heard from several council members that there's a possibility that, that there's another process that the council has to follow, and so they have, in some ways, you're limited in, in how you can engage us. However, any and all the issues with the, with the Logan Six development apply to the entire neighborhood, okay? So when we talk about traffic, we're not just talking about this, this, this specific instance. When we talk about parking, we're not just talking about this specific instance. When we talk about almost all the issues that have, that we've brought up, um, if, if one were to just step back and look at the entire neighborhood, you would see that we're asking for help, and that even though it's because of one example, we're not just talking about that one particular instance. It's, it's the whole neighborhood, it's all the accumulating effects of development, of traffic. Um, so, I guess what I would say is, I'm frustrated, okay? And there's an angel on my shoulder that wants to say nice things and encourage you because you also have the power to make decisions, and there's a devil on my shoulder that wants to say a bunch of other things. But I'm, I'm not listening to both. I'm just gonna basically say that if I were to look back at the last year and someone asked me, "How, how is the city council on, on the issues you brought up?" Well, I would say, y'all get an incomplete, okay? And one of you is a teacher, so you know what an incomplete means. Like, you haven't done what we've wanted you to do, and we're willing to wait and see what you do, but right now, if I was gonna give you a grade, you know, you might wanna think about retaking this class, because the way I see it, the fact, as Cheryl mentioned, that we haven't had you come engage with us on any of this, to me, is very disappointing. Um, I think if you sat in my shoes and were standing here right now, and, and it was something in your neighborhood, I bet you would feel the same way. And if you didn't, then you're just not paying attention. So, what I'm basically saying is, we're following the process, we'll be, a lot of us will be at a hearing tomorrow, and I spent all weekend preparing a document to give to the hearing examiner. Um, but those are things I wish I could give to you, but, but unfortunately, because of the way this process is set up, you aren't allowed to hear it. So, maybe you'll hear it in a different way, but as a policymaking board, this is just a really crazy process, and I could tell you that for anyone who's dealing with land use, this, there's gotta be a better way for us to engage the council. So maybe that's something you'll think about going forward, and I just hope it's not too late in, in this instance. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Judith, do we have anybody signed up online by chance? Okay. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. We have four items to approve unless someone wants to pull an item for a separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the consent agenda to be approved as published.
Second. Has been moved that the consent agenda be approved as published. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes. All right, next up is Unfinished Business. And let's go to Councilmember Van.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee has six committee reports to present.
All right, Finance Committee, committee report. The first is approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments, accounts payable, total payment of $18,266,557.91 for a number of vouchers, payroll benefit withholding vouchers, and three wire transfers. And two is payroll, total payment of $1,964,687.11 for payroll vouchers, including 677 direct deposits and nine checks. This is the January 1st through 15th, uh, pay period. Uh, this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
All right, it's the move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. Moved and seconded. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Name? Motion passes.
The next report is regarding a utility bill leak adjustment for the Kenworth Truck Company. Uh, the Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to, uh, the customer account in the amount of $2,170.17 for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code 8-446 and 8-523. Signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
I move that council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next report is also a utility bill adjustment for Shadowhawk LLC. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the adjustment to the customer's account in the amount of $2,889.62 for excess consumption caused by a qualified water line leak in accordance with Renton Municipal Code 8-4-46 and 8-5-23. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
The move and seconded, that the council concur with the Finance Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes.
The next report is regarding the conversion of a Civil Engineer II to a Civil Engineer III position. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the conversion of the vacant Civil Engineer II position in the Development Engineering Division to a Civil Engineer III position. Authorized to hire the preferred candidate for the position at a salary step, uh, at a salary up to Step E of the salary table, depending on the qualifications of the applicant, and with a start date of February 17th, 2025 or later. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
Then move the council concur, moved and seconded, the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes.
All right, the next report is regarding, uh, budget adjustment and approval of supplement number three to a contract with KPG Somas Incorporated. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute supplement number three to contract 22381 with KPG Somas Incorporated for $212,131 for construction engineering services. The committee also recommends concurrence in the recommendation to approve a budget adjustment of $400,000 on the Rainier Avenue South Corridor Improvements Phase Four Project. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
The move and seconded, that council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes.
All right, the final Finance Committee Report is regarding a, uh, cybersecurity grant. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the state and local cyber, cybersecurity grant program contract, E25-279. This, too, is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report.
Second.
The move and seconded, the council concur with the recommendation of the Finance Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes. Uh, Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Development Committee has two committee reports.
Hey, the first committee report is regarding a, uh, ordinance streamlining land use appeal procedures. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to streamline the land use appeals process by removing the city council from hearing appeals of land use decisions. The committee further recommends that Section 6.1.3 of Policy and Procedure 807 be waived and that the related ordinance be presented for first and second and final reading it, uh, and adopted at tonight's council meeting. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Yes.
I move the council concur in the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
I move the seconded, the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes.
Right, the final report for the Planning and Development Committee is regarding the, uh, 2025 Title IV Docket 20. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the staff and planning commission recommendation to adopt the 2025 Title IV Docket items. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Uh, number one is co-living. Number two is planned urban development regulations dash private open space. Three is rezones to residential multifamily II, RMF dash two, and commercial neighborhood CN. Four is corner stores and neighborhood retails. Five is code interpretations, and six, comprehensive Plan 2025 amendments. This is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
The move and seconded, the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Committee Report. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Councilmember McIrvin.
Uh, no unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, moving on to, uh, legislation, we have one ordinance for first reading and advancement to second and final reading.
Hey, ordinance number 6157, an ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, streamlining land, uh, use appeals by removing city council closed record appeal hearings from the review process and clarifying references to the appeal process by amending subsections 4310 F2E, 47230P, 48070H1, 48070I, 48080G, 48110A, 48110C, 48110E4, and 49240K3P of the Renton Municipal Code and repealing 48110F of the Renton Municipal Code. Authorizing corrections, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh, first, I want Jason to read that all over. Uh, secondly, um, for the folks who came in audience comment tonight and talked about the Logan Six- six and the appeals and the fact that council's not been able to really talk to you, by passing this ordinance, we are removing ourselves from the appeal process so that we are able to engage with you guys on this. Otherwise, it'd be considered ex parte communication previous. If we kept things the way they are now, it'd be considered ex parte communication on the information outside of the closed appeal, so we wouldn't be able to use any of that in any of the decisions. By passing this tonight, we're removing ourselves from that process and we'll be able to better engage with members of the community about issues such as this. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance be heard on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be, be heard it, move forward and and heard again a second and final reading tonight, something like that.
I don't get it right.
What's that?
I don't get it right.
Do you think I understood what you just said? Anyway, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Jason, for presenting it and Mr. Chair, for presenting this ordinance. This, I toil with this ordinance as an attorney and as also a politician, I say proudly, because I try my best to advocate for the community. But I do understand what has happened in the past with what we have in terms of engagement of council members and the community. However, while this amending does allow us to engage more with community, it does eliminate us through the process. So the issue that I have is how are we better representing the community as an advocate? Then of course, looking at the process and best practices as an attorney, how can we streamline the process so that there's no more bureaucracy in the process? And what really helped me decide is there are 17 jurisdictions around our, our area that went with eliminating the engagement of council member in the process so that it be speedier of a process. And that would be more just in that all of us come onto this council with different lived experiences and different professional background. And oftentimes to safeguard for the future as well is those who are in the position and not knowing how to analyze the law and what we can review within the close records as presented by the hearing examiner. So with all that, I, I say that because it's not a vote that I take lightly, but I think to safeguard for future and current and also to help with good practices, I think this is the right approach. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, name? Motion passes.
I'll read it again. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, streamlining land use appeals by removing city council closed record appeal hearings from the review process and clarifying references to the appeal process by amending subsections 43010F2E, 47230P, 48070H1, 48070I, 48080G, 48110A, 48110C, 48110E4, and 49240K3P of the Renton Municipal Code and repealing 48110F of the Renton Municipal Code, authorizing corrections, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the ordinance be adopted as read. Councilmember Prince, you, you got your wish, by the way. This time for second, a second reading requires a roll call vote. So Councilmember, oh, sorry, Jason, that's your, your job.
Council President Albertson.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Paradise.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right. So next we're on to new business. I will actually start off by saying that on, there it is, on next Monday, there will be no, as it's President's Day holiday, February 17, there will be no meetings of the committees or of the council. And then on February 24, at 6:00 PM, the committee of the whole will meet in the conference center, one item on the agenda, and that is disaster recovery framework. And then at 7:00 PM, they'll have the regular council meeting here in council chambers and via video conference. And that is all. Councilmember Van.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 24, at 4:15, the Finance Committee will be meeting at the council conference room and also via video conference. There are three items on the agenda. First one, Transportation Improvement Board, grant acceptance to the 116th Avenue Saudi Sidewalk Project, which I'm very excited about this because this is exactly where the Family First is and we didn't have sidewalks around that area. So I'm very, very happy about this. And second, vouchers. And third, emerging issues in finance. Thank you.
Councilmember Prince.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, February 24, at 5:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting. We have, in the council conference room and by video conference, we have three items on our agenda. One, House Bill 1042, use of existing buildings for residential purposes. Two, economic development update on written downtown projects. And then three, emerging issues in CED. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McIrvin.
No new business, Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, February 24, at 3:15 PM, the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. The first is urban forestry update and the second is emerging issues in parks and recreation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting on Monday, February 24, at 2:15 PM. We have four items on the agenda. The first will be a six and park building update. The second is a recruitment update. Third, RFA briefing. And last, but certainly not least, emerging issues in public safety. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we've come to the end. No more on the sheet here. What's the wish of the council?
Move for adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Motion passes. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.